Okay.
Roll them.
The Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is December the 6th, 2019. Time is 9:00 AM. I've been on this counterclockwise move. No, and of course, we're missing our attorney, so I would ask if Ms. Jackie Beavis would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Stand up and your mind goes blank.
I know.
Who's that talking?
Let's see, what is it? Ah, America.
I almost sung the national anthem.
That's right. Oh, say.
I asked a lady one day, forgot to ask her ahead of time, and so I asked her, right?
Fuzzy phone.
She just went blank. And the guy said, "I pledge." Oh, yeah, I pledge. It just freaked her out, so. Madam Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll, please?
I would. Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Cantor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince. Attorney Clint Smith, not present. And Clerk to the Board Kelly Kemper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Audience introductions. We'll start to the east.
Well, then, we'll agree.
Jackie Beavis, send them.
Thank you. Welcome. Glad to have you here. I do this because I try to remind myself as well to make sure our cellphones are silenced. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
None here.
Can't we add five or six things?
Let's do it, because I don't want to get done at 11:00. I don't want to do it that hour.
What are we going to do if we do?
I mean, those three extra hours.
Yeah, no kidding. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve either Commissioner items. Anything of any substance since yesterday?
None from me.
Commissioner Prince?
I met with a gentleman yesterday who lives in Dallas, excuse me, Denver. And he's buying eight to 10 lots in Silver Cliff and wants to make some short-term rent. Not short-term, no, I'm sorry. Low-income rentals, I'm sorry. I said that wrong. Low-income rentals and maybe some for sale also between six and eight units. So I hooked him up with the attainable housing. Charles Vogel spoke to him. They're all excited and both sides look like they're working well. So we may have something happening there aside from our lot purchase project.
Single-family or multi-family dwellings?
Well, that was questionable. They're not sure what they want to do. They were thinking about maybe duplexes for the rentals and single-family for the purchase. But it was in his infancy, but that's what his goal is, is to build.
He wants to be a builder for them or?
A builder. He bought the lots.
Make money on them.
Well, he already bought the lots. I didn't really get into, as they say, money-making project or not. He said to me, "I'm interested in doing low, lower-cost entry-level homes." And I said, "You're barking up the exact right tree. This is a big issue."
We got those lots, we got our lots, let's make it.
And that's exactly what I told him. So I got him in touch with Vogel and that group, and they're working on it.
Good. Well, I stopped in Florence on the way home from CCI conference and met with their building trades teacher, who happens to be a longtime friend of mine. And they're in the process of, they're working, they're roofing a 23 or 2400 square foot home. These building trade high school kids are. And they've built 10 or 12 of them down there. So I stopped and talked to him, and I asked him if we could get the attainable housing superintendent, the building trades teacher, and maybe the commissioner and whoever else, get the school bus and drive down there and spend some time looking at that project. And I just, I think.
Might be a good thing just to get our building trades.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
They built a couple houses.
Try to, yeah, they built four altogether. Two in town and two up there.
One up there and one out there.
So, yeah, I thought maybe we could invite the school board members and all of that. So I didn't know. I thought maybe we could try to do it in an afternoon on a day that we had a Commissioner meeting that we knew we'd be around, so I don't know.
I think we could do it after a wet morning.
Well, we won't have a wet morning meeting in January, so probably.
Do you want to do it before?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd really like to do it before the end of the year, but I, that's probably going to get away from us, so. But, and then I did go get the van, sheriff's office van, and I took it down to the road and bridge department and asked him if they could get started on converting that back to
A civilian?
Normal use, civilian use, yep. So I talked to Chris Hoppen again this morning about it. So it seemed like it's pretty nice. It's the first time I've driven it, 118,000 miles on it, but.
Didn't shake rattling?
Yeah, it seemed to be pretty roadworthy just driving it down there. You know, as an example, Tish put 10,000 miles on her personal car last, in 2019. And of course, she got reimbursed for it, but still, wearing a personal vehicle, that's too many miles. And I know that him donating that vehicle to DHS ran the sheriff department short because they really do need two transport vans. They don't need two all the time, but that was pretty nice of him to say, "You know what? They probably need it more often than we do." I'm not saying they need it more than we do, they just need it more often, and I agree with that. But just like this morning, they had to transport four prisoners from Pueblo and four prisoners from Canyon City to be up here for district court today. And he said, "It's going to be tough," but. So that's the only thing really that I've done, fielded a phone call message from Jordan Hedberg from the paper. Of course, he was unhappy about my remarks yesterday, and I called back and left him a message because I couldn't get a hold of him. But I just want to move forward in a positive manner and try to come to some solution that will satisfy the needs of the citizens. So that's about all I've done. I don't have anything to report on upper arc either since yesterday. Anyone else?
None but me.
No attorney items, admin, just none? Nothing? Public comment? Anything for the good of the order, not on the agenda? So this is one of those deals. Yesterday, I looked, it was 9:45 when we got to the first staff report.
I looked at that.
And so I got on my phone during the meeting and texted Karen, said, "Maybe we need to move the, start these staff reports to 9:30." Well, here, we're going to be ready to start staff report at 9:10. So how in the world? Do you know? You know, but the second day, it doesn't seem like we have as much.
Yeah, and if it's a low agenda item area, it might be an indicator of a later start.
Well, yeah, and your second day, you don't have nearly as many Commissioner things.
We're not going to do this big, long report. We spent.
Maybe do the first day at one time.
That's right, because we've got more to say and ask each other the first time we get together.
Yeah, we spent 20 minutes yesterday talking about CCI between the three of us, which I felt like it was important, but.
Spend enough money going there, we ought to talk about it.
That's exactly right. That's what I thought.
We need to talk, too. We can't talk except that he's needing.
So, yeah, maybe on the first day, we do 9:30, on the second day, 9:15. But people get in the habit, I mean, you thought it was going to be 9:15 today, right? Which it is, it's scheduled to be 9:15, so I don't know, but.
So you've got to sit there another five minutes.
Yeah.
You'll keep talking for the next five minutes, just for you.
I'm stalling, see, till we get to 9:15, but.
Sure. I'm looking at our agenda, and where it says staff reports, we have two entries, the airport and the treasure, which is possible action item. Hang on a minute. Okay, I might see this in a minute. I would recommend, and I thought we kind of mentioned this yesterday, maybe on where it says staff reports, just put a line right there, possible action items, so just in case.
All of them.
I know all of them.
We could have an action.
And the reason we didn't do anything, that agenda was already pretty.
It was already, I just stand up for the future.
I just didn't think the 24-hour, I wasn't sure if I could change it. So, but I do have it for next month.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I just think that's a smart idea, just in case something comes up.
I agree.
We're ready to go.
Yeah, we did it twice yesterday, actually, so.
Once on one that said it and once on one that didn't.
Yeah, that's right. It did say it on the road and bridge, so. Anyway, if there's no public comment, we'll move on then, staff reports. Mr. Lynn, good morning, sir. How are you? How's things in your world?
Good.
Yeah.
May I? Anywhere you want. I don't want to look at myself.
I move it. I don't want to look at you either.
I know.
I forget how the thing actually works.
Good morning, sir.
Quit looking in the mirror when I go.
You moved into your hangar, Lynn?
I don't know. I haven't been out there for a few days, but, so. I'm assuming it's going up or up.
Yeah, is this the 5T?
No.
No.
It's personal hangar.
So Mr. Jolly says we sold 417 gallons in November, leaving us with a current inventory of 1,700 gallons. So, we're in good shape for several more months. Depending on the weather, it could be three months, so.
That means you have left 1700?
Yeah. Then we have Mr. McDonald did some, we did some measuring, and then he's got a neat little program on his computer. Yeah. On current layout and. Yeah, would you like one, too?
I would.
Just to kind of give you an idea of where the new run, our taxiways will be. T, the T1 that you were talking about, Jay? That's the, Mr. McDonald's putting up those T hangars there. And he wants two of, two spots already, because the first five that he started on are already rented, gone, sold. So he wants to do another one. C1 up there that we're calling, that whole row of hangers, custom. Instead of us picking sizes to do and then somebody come along wanting two, like we've already experienced, we'll just let them lease whatever be custom stuff. Lot 19 and 13, 14, and 15 are the only ones left on the existing taxi lane. 19 being the only one that is current buildable.
So nobody has that yet?
13, 14, 15 can't build on.
Correct. They need the dirt.
So 19 is available?
Yes.
As a building site?
Right.
13, 14, and 15 need dirt?
Need dirt. Other than that, that's all, that's all full, and plans for hangers for this summer, if I understand.
And lot 3 is vacant, correct, currently?
Yes. And that's supposed to be something go up on that this spring, too.
Okay, and the double wide, is that the 2021? The condo?
Mr. Otto's?
Which one is it?
It's 1718.
Is it 1718?
Yeah.
Okay. And has he got it? What's his plan for that? Is he?
Well, the doors, remember the doors were the wrong ones, and so I haven't heard that.
He has somebody in both sides? I know he's got a partner.
Yeah, they're both spoken for.
And are they putting two airplanes each in it?
One, as far as I understand, I know.
I'm just asking. The only reason I'm asking that I'm going to bring this up is I had somebody call me wondering if there's anything available here to purchase, because he wants to move up here from Denver. He doesn't have a plane yet. And I told him that we had the condo that we could talk to somebody about. And then I told him we had the three there. I didn't know 19 was still available. I thought somebody had already moved, bargaining on it. But I, I will send you what I got. I did send it, I told him that Bob Jolly is the guy to talk to.
Right.
But I didn't know he was sick.
Yeah.
And so I'll send it to you, too.
What are you going to do with your extra hangar?
I'm going to lease it, rent it out. It's.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
And it's, but it's spoken for.
Oh, it is.
Somebody on it.
Yeah. So, you know, back to those thoughts. That's why we need to continue to push forward to get those other two taxi lanes up to snuff and some pavement on them.
What's your plan on those at the moment?
At the moment is, is springtime now, probably, before we can get any. Gary Hyde was going to come and do some grading out there and get us ready to go. But then the weather's moved in and.
The only issue I have, and I've brought this up a couple times, I don't see it here yet, is to me, the C1 hangars facing, they face east, right?
Right.
The T hangars face both ways.
Both ways.
I still think we need to move that and put an outside parking area between T hangars and C in order to have room, because remember, even under the ramp expansion, we only have seven airplanes that can park.
And we've talked about that a little bit.
What's the reason you don't want it?
Well, it's not we don't want it, we're just thinking that we got this over here north of the county building, DF Bill, and then coming down this taxi lane back to the east. We could do something there.
As long as Navajo doesn't do it.
Right.
Right, and Navajo could do something weird. And then, and then maybe you would, to me, I would, you, up against the road, you'd like to see some businesses, airport painting, you know, in a hangar, whatever. But I think it protects the airplanes better between the row of hangers and the T hangars because the winds are always prevailing out of northwest or northeast, north-south, or southeast coming across. Just something to think about.
Right.
Something to.
And we did talk about it.
Do that, because if we're going to really grow, a lot of people come in, they're getting more and more time, want to tie down, coming in to visit.
Right.
Could you do a tie-down north of?
You could do it north of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's north space to the north, too.
Absolutely.
I mean, to the east, sorry.
And to the east. You could do that.
We could do another one to the east.
Idea to the east would be okay.
Or, like I said, even to the north now of the existing taxi lane, if we eventually got that. I mean, there's, there's places to go with it. And we did talk about it.
Ideally, that needs to be paved, too, to tie down there.
Right. That's what I wanted to say. We really, we're leasing lots on areas that don't even have taxi lanes at this point.
Right.
So it's.
So when we, now it's going to, the rubber's going to meet the road.
Yeah.
Put pavement down, so you're locked into the design, so you.
Right.
Get a big, you know, you really throw a good study on it. I'm good with it when it comes. And then you've got, you also shown that you've got a big berm up here.
Right.
And I think you've talked to Gary about taking some of that dirt and throwing it in these three lots down here.
Yep, yep. Although the more he looked at it, and he put some grade stakes out there. He said, "There's really not that much out there."
Every time he filled the loose spots.
Right, right.
That's probably true.
But he thought he'd do what he could with, yeah, so.
Good.
Right, good deal.
Nice drawing, that helps.
Yeah, don't it?
This is great.
It is, huh?
It was great.
Yeah.
You did a good job.
So.
And did you verify, just out of curiosity, the boundary line going to the south off the corner? You know, the fence, is the fence on the boundary line, or do we have a right-of-way on the outside of the fence, the east side of the fence line going south?
Oh, uh, east side going south, um, down the.
You know, the gate that swings open into the airpark?
Right.
And that fence line going south is, I don't think it's on the boundary. And I was asked that by the engineers because they want to run power to the new ramp area on the outside of the fence. They don't want to be in a paid road place.
Right, right.
Yeah, I.
I really don't know.
If you find the stakes, I'd be surprised if we had amusement down there.
I would be, too, but Kit seems to think, he does not, we need to get with Kit before we start building that ramp.
Okay. I've always assumed it was on the.
I did, too, but the engineers told me that it wasn't, based on whatever they researched.
Okay. Well, we'll see what we can do with that. Do you guys know where we're at with the fire department and that concrete fiasco? No? Okay.
Get, talk to Donna. Turn.
Where they wanted you to file on your insurance.
Yeah, just file on your insurance. Get her to do it so they can deal with the, with the.
I do think that paperwork got to Kit.
Oh, it did?
I think so.
So it will find it.
Because Sharon was going to take care of that.
Usually the insurance company would be calling back and then dealing with their insurance company.
She was going to meet with Kit that afternoon because there was some talk of the fire truck, some bad vibes going on with the fire truck.
Yeah, there is. It's got some issues, no question. I understand now, and they can't even get it started, so.
Well, the other vibe was paying for the.
Yeah, that it may go away was kind of the last.
Bigger than a vibe, that might be.
It wasn't a vibe. I'd pay me now or pay me now.
Right.
Yeah, that was a big roar.
Karen, did Vince Dugan want on the mid-month agenda for, to talk about that fire truck?
Yes.
So he's on the mid-month agenda to come in and talk about, who's going to pay for that fire truck? I don't know why they keep coming to the county. I thought we made it clear last time that.
Fire district.
Do this, but, and I don't, I don't get it. I mean, I don't know why we would even talk to our, our insurance company about that. And I said that to Kit in a meeting.
That wasn't Kit, that was Donna saying that she could be worked out, because it's, it happened on our property.
Yeah.
And so you work, and so then it's just like a car, you know? Our insurance, if you get hit by somebody, that was their fault, then our insurance, your car insurance would deal with their insurance and get reimbursed.
Okay. Courtesy car?
Courtesy car's been used already.
Wonderful, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, so.
And they didn't wreck it the first time?
They didn't wreck it.
And they brought it back?
And it came back, and it came to town and went back.
It wasn't transporting trucks, we're in good shape.
Exactly. Well, I don't, can't say.
We all know that.
Right.
To the best of our knowledge.
To the best of our knowledge.
Had more gas in it than when they started.
Yeah. It was like a quarter tank, and it came back with a half a tank, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, so.
I'm going to suspect people who use that car are going to do that kind, I mean, those are the kind of people.
Yes.
That are just going to take care.
Yep, exactly. So just one other thought, we certainly will invite you guys to another powwow out at, one of your meetings out at the airport, when you can.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit. I can't remember, well, I can look.
You need to do is get.
The last time I had to leave before I.
Get the grill out.
Yes, you've got to stay for dinners.
Let me see when it was.
We'll play on lunch.
Burgers and beers.
It's April, I think.
That's what I was thinking, it was April, and I wondered if we weren't going to try it in May, but.
A little warmer.
Yeah. So whenever you guys can pull it off.
Yeah, my computer's being stupid.
I play a two-one in May, wouldn't September.
There you go.
Try to open it one more time.
No? Okay, well.
So I think it was in April as well, but. I'd, I'd like to do it in May if we can, because I think the weather would be a little nicer, because it's kind of a, people like to open it, they don't need to open those doors.
Right. Burn some burgers, I guess.
Burn some burgers.
Yeah.
They can that schedule pretty quickly here.
Yeah, in a month, so we'll just try to remember that, and you don't have a preference one way or the other.
No.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, appreciate you coming in, buddy. You heading out there?
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Yeah, you guys, too.
Oh, my. Who's back there? The ghost of BOCC admin hat.
How's it going?
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
A skill not many people have or use, actually looking at somebody when you shake their hand.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's nice.
That's what everybody should do.
How are you?
Good. We got the tires, so, well, I'll bring them up to Road and Bridge next week, so hopefully they can. Oh, you guys. There you go. It was zoomed in in the corner. I mean, it's better now.
It got tipped over.
Yeah, so, yeah, the tires will go on, and then, so it'll be good. We had a. You guys?
Going berserk.
We had a really good mass fatality management workshop. It was two days, and we learned a lot. The state came and facilitated for us, and so we have plans together, to get together and write a really good plan for the county. We have one as a county right now, but it's not the most effective plan, and so we're just kind of revamp it. It's going to be really good. Restructure the CES group. I think I sent you guys the charts for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Right at the beginning, the VML sign project.
What is VML?
Variable messaging board, so in 2019, we put in a couple ideas for the Homeland Security grant, and the corner vehicle got the priority, which is good. But then the variable messaging board, it's like those C dot boards that have the.
Watch out, deer like on the road.
Yeah, and so one of the big things for us here is that it takes a while for that resource to get here. We have available, it's available to us, but it takes a little bit. And so that's going to be one of the projects to put forth in the next go-around for Homeland Security. Depends, I'm not sure.
50 grand or more?
See, like, when we first talked about that, they were 20, 30.
Something like that, yeah. So we're hoping maybe a couple, and then that would be a regional asset to where if something happened within our south region.
And those are like wheels, see, for wheeling out, wheeling in, kind of. Roads close two miles ahead.
Right, wildfire, stuff like that.
Camp or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so that's on the radar. Another project on the radar is kind of revamping our EOC, Homeland Security Operations Center facilities and trying to get some good things in place so that we don't have to scrounge around to get it all together. Yeah. Anything else to highlight from it?
How was your part-time help working out?
Great.
Good, MC, you doing well?
Yeah, he's been really good. He's, he did all the tire stuff for me, so that was great. Yeah, let's see.
Where'd you end up getting the tires?
Online. It was like the cheapest option for what? We, we looked at like, I think, eight different spots, and that was the cheapest, and so, yeah. The AOP, so in January, I, I got your email, which was good, thanks for the date. So in January, each January, we go through an AOP meeting, annual operating plan with DFPC, Division of Fire Protection and Control, to set forth how we're going to work together. There's usually not any changes to it, it's just that, kind of going through it. So, um, Joe Lobiondo gave me some dates, um, and if any of those that's listed in the report don't work for you guys, let me know. Um, we're just trying to, we have to coordinate a bunch of schedules. Um.
Okay, perfect. If you happen to see, let me call you.
Yeah, did you get that string of dates that she was asking about? I see you have yours there, Jay.
Trying to get.
Yeah, I responded this morning to her.
Second, third, sixth, ninth, tenth. Okay.
Morning or afternoon?
Uh, either one, um.
That's this month?
January.
Oh, January.
Yeah.
We're passing. The second?
Second, third, sixth, ninth, tenth.
The ninth doesn't work for us. We have a broke that day.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
It looks good.
But seventh is okay.
I told you ninth was good, but I.
It's not.
Because I didn't go to January's calendar. I just looked in mine and so I missed that.
We haven't set our B O C C calendar right.
Right.
Seventh is okay with me.
Oh, seventh's not one of the.
I thought you said seventh.
Second, third, sixth, ninth.
Yeah.
Then let's do the sixth and do the sixth. I don't wanna get into that week.
Yeah, that's what I had said too. It was the third worked for me. I was just looking. Now, we don't have.
Six doesn't for you guys?
Uh, no. For some reason, the sixth, well, it wasn't even an option, was it, the sixth?
It is, yeah.
Oh, it is, okay. Um, so we don't have back-to-back B O C C.
We got it on the thirty-first, obviously.
Right, but.
And then we don't have it.
I thought it was gonna be the seventh and eighth.
Well, you know, I could have, we could do both. That's the last one they have.
Right, but the sixth is a Monday.
Oh, then it's the seventh.
But not the eighth. We only have one meeting that week.
I'm good on the eighth. You can't do it on the eighth.
These are dates that were given to me from D F P C and so.
We must a lot of things. I don't know if that's gonna work.
Yeah, that's why, Jay, the seventh is that appointment day.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
For what?
We just don't do staff reports.
Okay, so we're gonna meet on the seventh?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, not the seventh. You guys can't do the eighth. The eighth wasn't an option?
Well, it.
No.
Sixth.
Yeah, she's gonna check.
I just need a couple dates so that, um, there's a, yeah, so we need the chef needs to be in it, um, you have your support service.
Absolutely have to.
Okay, is there other, we need maybe like two other dates that work?
Tenth looks good and thirteenth looks good.
Tenth would be.
Yeah.
Perfect. Um. There, I had kind of an idea, um, so we've talked a lot, a lot about the need for a P I O for the county, Public Information Officer. Um, and I was talking to Shannon a little bit and I think it'd be good to kinda have like a good discussion over it and the necessity for it. Um, I can look for maybe grants that would pay for one. I talked to some other people and there's not, they don't know specifically just for P I Os. Um, so that might be a challenge.
Are you thinking of an additional person or someone or the training for someone?
Well, so my kind of, we've talked about it with Desiree from Solvista and we had a kind of a group together and we kinda had the idea of having, um, a S R member, a search and rescue member. Or a couple training from there and who are already involved in our volunteer organizations, um, which is great for emergencies. Um, but there's also, I think, a need for a P I O in general, just for, for a county.
Right, yeah, I agree. I think we need a county P I O.
Yeah, um.
The question was, were you thinking of a new person or someone to train someone who already is a county?
That, that's kind of on y'all's, um, purview on that one. Um.
Okay.
I think it's just definitely a need. All the, um, incidents that we've, I've gone on and it's always been a deliverable after one.
Just wonder how.
Yeah, yeah, me too. Um, so I can look at grants. I don't know what that would look like in general, um, but I think it's definitely a need that we should discuss and talk through.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, for it to be right, it's, it's a commitment for the training. There's significant amount of training for it.
Right.
The problem with hiring somebody new is they'd be busy during the training period after that and we might go six months and never utilize them.
That's, okay, that's possible, maybe someone would have.
Well, yes and no. So, um, it could be utilized for the press releases that you guys would be doing, um, the different things that, um, are, different agencies are working on. So like even the airport could utilize them. Um, there's ways to use them.
That's true.
There's ways to use that position outside of emergencies, um, kinda get the rumor, uh, wheel cut down a little bit, um, which is not the right information. Right. Yeah, and so just having that position, doing all of those, um, I think it'd be really good. My thought over that one, um, is, um, Alex could do part of it. Um, I, he doesn't have the set training for a P I O and that is quite the process. However, um, there's kind of give and take within that, I think. Um, he's smart and quick and can handle that one pretty easily.
I think he'd be a great candidate for the emergency side of P I O.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
Yeah, well, we can keep that on the burner.
Yeah, um, next meeting, this mid-month is the eighteenth, is that right? Can I please be on the agenda for you to sign the hazard mitigation documents?
Yes, we will do that, um. Consideration of the hazard mitigation plan.
Uh, hazard mitigation plan grant.
Grant.
Thanks, um.
When do you need to peel it? Next month?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Um, we'll try and get it before, um, Christmas and it can be sent out to them. Um, I think that's really all it, we have a.
Get a copy of that ahead of time to look at.
Yeah, so, um, I'll put it all together and send it to you, um, to you all before. Um, there is a, oh, you, you're busy on the seventh, is that right? So there's a south, our South Region Communication Tabletop that was rescheduled because of the Decker fire, um, is being, uh, rescheduled on January seventh. Um, nine to twelve in Canyon, um.
Yeah, I don't think we have conflict.
Sorry. So I think it'd be really good, um, January seventh, nine to twelve, um.
B O C C.
What is it?
A South Region Tabletop.
Seven?
Yeah. So, yeah.
Tuesday the seventh.
Alex, it is? No.
That's in Canyon?
Yeah, in Canyon. Um, so we've worked together as a South Region to create this tabletop to kind of mitigate some communication, um, problems. So we're starting at between, it's a incident that affects Fremont and Custer County and then in a couple of months, we'll do one that affects Warfino and Los Animas. And then the third one is a full South Region one. So if you can make it, that'd be great.
Well, we've got a B O C C meeting scheduled that day.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize.
No worries.
So. That's a Tuesday, I.
Are you talking about January?
It's Fremont County offices.
I just looked. I didn't think the seventh sounded right. The second Tuesday.
Wait a minute, my calendar says, and I'll have to change it.
Where is it?
In Canyon City at the, um, I'll get the address to you guys. It's like the help of the building. It's their E O C, yeah, it's their, in their E O C.
Well, the only reason to be on there is because when we set it last year, that's the day. I just, I put all the dates in my calendar. It should be the fourteenth. Go ahead and move.
Second Tuesday.
That sounds like.
Is that probably?
And then, and then the mid-month must be.
You don't have a mid-month. Generally, you don't have a mid-month.
Okay, so this is a rule for December or January.
In January, you always have the second Tuesday and then the end of the month.
Got it.
Okay, I got it on the fourteenth and the seventh works.
So the seventh, nine to twelve, there's a tabletop, food's provided.
Did you send us a kind of an email?
Yeah, so I'll, um, we have a flyer and I'll send it to you guys.
So the seventh is okay.
Perfect. Any questions for me? I think that's really all I wanna highlight.
How's your building?
Uh.
It had a lot of snow, obviously no rain.
Yeah.
There was some concern about the roof.
Yeah, there's, I mean, those spots I think are, I don't think they've grown, but there's like, you can still see.
Water's fine.
Yeah, um, I haven't noticed anything different than that.
Everything else working on it?
Yeah, trucking along. I'm excited about the change in the C E S group and putting a little bit more of a emphasis on plans and training as a group, so it'll be really good.
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie to you. I was a little distracted that day during that meeting.
Really?
Or not a grant, but a document that I had to submit that day and I was trying to finish it up during your meeting.
No worries.
I, I really got the sense that it's probably, this new format's not gonna be as regular and it's not gonna be as critical that a commissioner is at every meeting.
Right, so, um, you're, you guys are more than welcome to like come in at any of the meetings for sure. Um, with the restructuring, it won't be, we won't be meeting each month, um, but the ones that we do will be, um, more, um.
Work-based?
Yeah. It'll be more effective, I guess, is.
I didn't know if we needed to be at those work-based ones versus.
Um, I think there might be a few, um, depending on what the plan is or the training and things, um, but not as regular as the, what has happened. Yeah, so.
Good. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I'm good.
All right, ma'am. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for sending us your reports.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Have a good day today.
Goodbye.
Well, thank goodness for paper because my computer is on the fight this morning. All right.
Can you double for the public health nurse?
I know nothing about that.
I'll, uh, yeah, let's go ahead and we'll go back, we can go back to public health because she's not gonna be here this morning since Guinevere is here. Let's, uh, let's jump that real quick.
Sorry, Bill, I just, uh, I would not take help. Public health nurse advice for me.
Probably a good idea.
Yeah.
You might misrepresent a little.
Yeah, I, I think I know some stuff, but, you know, yeah. How are you guys?
Good, good, thank you.
Pretty good, pretty good.
Thanks for sending us your letter. I'm probably not gonna be able to open it, but I read it this morning, actually.
I think I didn't edit it thoroughly enough, so I apologize for. I know, I was like, oh, hate that. Yeah, yeah, you're like, I know, I know better.
Dear commissioners.
And I usually find those out when.
After you've finished it.
You hit send and then you look at it.
I know, I know.
I did open it this time, so good.
I saw.
I shut it off twice this morning since our meeting started, so.
Interviews nineteen twenty.
Yeah, yeah, if you, um, if you guys would like to sit in on those, I'm happy to have that, um, participation, but if you don't want to, um, definitely understand.
Okay.
You can probably sit in on enough.
Down here or you will do those upstairs?
I was just gonna do it upstairs, but certainly, uh, just assuming that I didn't know what was going on in this room.
How do you feel about commissioners sitting in on your interviews?
The position technically reports to you guys.
Understand that, but a lot of positions get filled and discussed without sitting in on the interviews.
Okay.
I would, I, I'm, I'm just looking for your guidance. Would you prefer we were there or prefer we weren't there and I'm not gonna hurt my feelings anyway.
I would, I would like it to be, um, that you have a participation in the hiring since they are your report. So if it's all three of you, great. If it's one of you, one and a half, just give up. Um, yes, I would like your participation if you can.
What time do they start?
I'm not sure yet, um, because I haven't even sifted through them. The closing date is the thirteenth and so I would like to come to you guys with like three or four of the top candidates. That way it's not like.
Are you considering right now using both of those days or one of those days?
Um, I, I wanted it to be, uh, open to those two days based on their availability.
Yeah.
Seven or eight.
Probably take.
Yeah.
What's the official title?
Office manager.
Um, I've got a meeting at eleven thirty on the nineteenth.
Okay.
And I'm out on the twentieth, so you want, I can go to the nineteenth and get on the twentieth.
Good, well, you know.
And I'm around.
I don't wanna overwhelm them and I don't want, I'm always concerned that.
When you have a big panel?
Where's it gonna be?
Uh, upstairs, probably.
So just, let's just send us an email and we'll coordinate because I'd feel, I, I feel, I'm just a little concerned that we'd overwhelm the candidate if the three commissioners are sitting.
You said nineteen twenty, no.
This month.
This month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be available in the afternoon on the nineteenth and all day on the twentieth because upper arc was canceled, so. Oh, you know what? No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not available on the twentieth. I get my acronyms mixed up.
What? How many you got?
Do you believe it?
Never.
Yeah, I've got an all-day meeting on the twentieth, so.
Well, yeah, so let's just, if you guys, I will send you the final schedule. If you can make it, great.
Perfect.
Do you wanna do that?
Okay. Certainly, uh, I don't have an issue with you doing it if you had to by yourself.
Yeah.
I would be comfortable with your selection or whatever, but, uh.
Well.
I would like to see a list of your interviewees. Are you think you'll interview them all or are you gonna pare that list down?
Um, what I'd like to do is pare it down to three or four. Um, I would just hate at some point if you were like, well, we had no say, even though I know you've given me the say. But, um, just to avoid future potential issues.
Well, if it happened to be in the afternoon on the nineteenth, I'd be all over that, but.
And you know, we have.
But you only need one of us, you said, so we can work it out.
And we have an extension advisory board member.
You said nineteen twenty, so I'm good either day.
Some old crusty. Some old crusty extension advisory member's gonna sit in.
She is not crusty at all.
Oh, she, it's a she.
Yeah, yeah.
Depends on the day.
You've never been crusty to me. I would not call you crusty.
Well, then, that's why you don't think she's crusty. I think she can be crusty.
But the day is early.
That's right, that's right. Day isn't.
You know, I, from reading your letter, I thought Master Gardeners was, was still a up and viable running group, but not.
Well, at the state level, yes.
No, I mean locally.
Yeah, no, there, there is the High Altitude Gardening Club and they do a lot of really cool things, um, but this is specifically a program through C S U.
Right.
Yeah.
I know we've had it in the past. I just sent this to them, so.
Yeah, I'm really trying to take on one new thing a year. That's it.
I don't know, I always thought they were one and the same, so I guess.
Oh, yeah, no, they're separate.
The High Altitude Gardener is a local gardening club and Master Gardening is a generic C S U specifically.
Yeah, you have, I think it's like forty hours of education and then the goal is for them to field a lot of the gardening questions as volunteer for the extension office. So they could come in and go on site visits and things like that, so.
Maybe at one point there was a few that did the Master Gardener that became a part of the gardening club.
I bet so, I bet so, yeah.
And I don't know, gentlemen, I mean, I, I'm thinking that commissioners ought to take a week off for Christmas.
I know, I almost fell out of my chair.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure. I'm concerned about the rest of the courthouse.
Oh.
That's your call.
Now she's crusty.
Yeah, I know.
No wonder you're crusty, huh? Oh, gosh. Yeah, so that's kinda nice.
I know, I, I had to double check with my boss. Is this accurate? Because that's really nice. So, um, yeah, that works out for me.
I would assume you'll post that the week before or something. I don't know, you're gonna be closed.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, um, so I have been working on the Fair Board M O U. How is that process for approval? Does that come to you? Do we, like, prior to presenting it to the Fair Board, what, what do we do there and you guys?
M O U with the Fair Board?
Yeah, we have a draft one that we've always, uh, this one was eighteen, um, and that's just what, um. I'd like to do, just to clarify roles and things like that, um, certainly sets the stage for this is how.
You're gonna be with them.
I think it's an internal thing in itself. I don't know that we need to have our fingers in that.
Great.
We have issues, obviously, and all that, but that's my feeling.
Oh, I agree. That's exactly what I was gonna say.
I just wanted to make sure the process was the, okay?
As you said, if there's a problem, we can talk about it.
I need to tell you, Dylan, straight up, because of Guinevere, we have a very unhappy.
Big problem.
Commissioner from Mineral County. He caught me in the elevator.
I was like, I didn't even know what was going on.
Started in on me. When he found out who I was, he said, I'm gonna tell you something. I am not very happy about losing our extension director, well, wasn't the extension director then, but losing Guinevere Nelson to you guys. And I said, well, you just let out of it, horse. We're just getting right fine.
We're thrilled at that.
We don't care about, yeah.
We don't care about you.
So we had a, we had a good visit on the elevator, but he, and I spoke to Guinevere about it. She knows who I'm talking about and, but he just loved her. He said, man, she was the bomb and we just.
Awesome.
Are not happy about having lost her to Custer County.
Not happy enough to pay her.
I said, well, we're paying her a lot more.
True, true.
I don't know, but.
No, it's the truth.
I said, if you come up with a hundred grand, you probably could've kept her.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, yeah, he was very complimentary and, uh.
Thanks. This is the last thing, um, C S U, we were, we sent in a budget. Their fiscal calendar is July to June, so they have time to prepare stuff for you guys. Um, by the end of your fiscal calendar, um, what they, this is, um, return on investment essentially gives for every dollar that you guys contributed, C S U contributes. And it's for, they, um, for your dollar is at ninety-seven cents, um, so. Um, so if you guys would like to look at that, that's.
For what?
Um, for extension and everything that extension does. So your contribution through the support staff, um, and your, um, budget, uh, for programming and stuff. And then what they contribute for, um, the rest of my position, their support of what I do, training, things like that. So, um, that's a new tool. If you guys would like to see anything else included in there. It was just really a way for us to communicate, um, to CSU and to the county about.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, who, how much money are we?
Everybody already said, was she halftime one of those?
Right, right. Yeah, so that, use that as a tool, and if there's something on there that you would like to see included, um, I would take that feedback. Essentially, this is a tool for me now to input, um, to provide to you, so, um, yeah.
What do you need from us when I'm coming to you? I know you just get that before.
Uh, nothing so far. I, um, I appreciate just all the support you guys have given, and seem to have a real positive attitude. I appreciate, you know, checking in and even that question, I really appreciate.
I think, I can speak for her, but I would very much.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I did see my boss when I was at the interviews down there for Fremont County. And he was like, man, they like you, so keep up the good work. So thank you for communicating that to my boss as well. I appreciate that.
Have you heard? Did they make a decision down there?
Not yet. Um, the Fremont office, they, their courthouse is on a Monday-through-Thursday schedule, so they're probably not here till Monday. Yeah.
You want this back?
Um, I have it electronically, so if you guys wanna look at it and suggest anything, I'm happy to do that, so.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Holler if you need anything.
Okay.
Wonderful to see you.
Nice to see you.
See you later.
See ya. See you, thank you. Bye.
Goodbye.
Hey, our favorite treasures here.
Favorite, wow. I got a favorite?
Good morning, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Well, thank you. She emailed that late, so you probably got it in your email, sir.
Do you wanna look at mine?
It should be there, yeah.
Yeah, you can look at this one as well, so quick.
Anything unusual out of the ordinary?
No.
Nobody's suing us at the moment?
Not that I've heard. I'm usually the last to hear, so.
What do you do with the petty cash, just out of curiosity? It's only five hundred bucks.
That's my PT money. I, I keep it to pay. It, it's a separate fund like, because I have to pay for my, um, mailings and my, uh, recordings and stuffs.
That's good.
So affordable housing.
That was always before in County General, and it was asked to be separated, so you could keep a better handle on.
Which I think is good. Um, so they had some money in there before they got their forty thousand dollar.
Yeah, it was not a whole lot.
Uh, so can we have a conversation about that account?
I don't have anything to do with that account. I don't know anything.
You just tracked the revenue.
I just tracked the revenue. I don't know, before, uh, it became affordable housing, it was, can you remember? It had like eight thousand dollars in it, and it was like a grant money, and you guys wanted, we wanted to get rid of it. And then we found out, no, you can't, because it was a grant money, and you have to use it for certain things.
I remember when they.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't remember the name of it.
We changed it to, when was it?
I don't know. It's in my.
At one time, I know it was a Housing Authority Board, but when we just went back strictly to attainable housing board. This, you're talking about three, uh.
Yeah, it was something totally different, I think, and they just.
What it did was if they, if they needed new windows to, uh, people couldn't afford it, needed new windows. If they applied for a grant, and they got paid for it, and then it went back in there.
And I suspect someday that'll probably, if they get healed up enough in that account that they can, because that's part of the whole affordable attainable housing thing through, uh, UCOS, is to rehab houses as well as provide new housing.
See, and I, I don't know about the parameters of that.
So I'm gonna guess that forty of that forty-seven thousand was the Elmar Grant, but Donna would track that.
Just a quick question, just education. The receipts for November are mainly from what? Is it just the taxes, uh, or is it, like Roden Bridge had a hundred thousand dollar receipts, so is that a, it seems odd that it comes in in November that much.
No.
What is it?
In November, we hardly have any taxes coming in.
I know, so what, what are those receipts?
That's receipts that they get. They get from like H U T F, it's, um, their driveway permits, their.
Is that right? Pretty big, big.
Poly construction has been putting a lot in for, for, uh, access.
They spent a hundred and thirty thousand, made a hundred, that's not bad.
Well, imagine that was late H U T F payment, but I don't know.
Eight, we get one nearly every month.
Oh, you do?
In the past, like in November, December, we used to not get any, but it's, it's gotten better. But yeah, H U T F, we get every, nearly every month.
That's a lot.
Well, okay. Ready for motion?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move that we approved the Treasurer's Report for November two thousand nineteen.
And I'd be happy to second that.
I'm excited to approve, uh, November, uh, Report Treasurer. Any further discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I pose name, motion carries.
I'm doing this again.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, well, easy enough.
I know.
Thank you.
As it always is, thank you.
Just on a side note, he's got an email from Kokoman. He, he's trying to make another move down your way for phone and fiber.
I'm gonna bring that up as an item.
Well, I cried when I heard they were just going to Rosita. It's three miles down to my house.
Yeah, now they wanna close that.
Well, I have a friend that's, works with them, and says, just hijack him, tell him people come. Yes, again, like they wouldn't know three miles. Well, cool.
Yeah, and then they wanna run it up one sixty-five up to the road going down the canyon and got washed out, so. But it's three point one million dollar project, and they're looking for a twenty-five percent grant. It's our match.
But see, that.
It's not true. We've got eight hundred thousand laying around either, but at least it's more on the table now than it has been for quite a while.
It's gonna happen, you outreach.
I'm not gonna hold my breath.
Don't hold your breath, but it will happen, maybe long after we're done holding your breath.
All right, ma'am, thank you. Appreciate it. So we'll back up to public health. Uh, we have a document. Oh, my God, my computer. She is not coming. She got out of town. No, we're good. Uh, we actually had two documents, one dated the second and one dated the third. So we'll, we'll deal with the one on the third, because that was the updated one. Um, she'll be back in town late today, but she asked if I could present it for. So pretty straightforward.
What's the date on it?
Uh, the third was the, oh, there's.
Not on it.
I was talking about the email data.
Oh.
Yeah, that's probably the right one. Pardon?
I got it.
You've got the most updated, okay. So, um, immunizations, uh, report on what their employees have been doing over there. I know they did go to that, uh, mass fatality class. Two-day class, that's all, where we end. It was last week, not the week before, so. Any questions about any of that, gentlemen? They still have their high school students working part-time with them, and I think that's good.
I've spent much time in the jail, that's good.
Yeah.
Just curious, the way I read this, I know it's not right, but it looks like fewer flu immunizations, a hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred twenty-six so far. She's been busy.
Yeah, no kidding. Uh, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
She updated that or something, and so I can't speak to that.
I know, I was just.
Yeah, yeah, does look like.
Josh.
No wonder there's no flu vaccine.
That's the world.
We've used it all in Custer County.
Even though we had that many people.
Yeah.
I haven't even had one.
Um, if you look under the immunization program down in the second page, she, she does mention that, uh. They've given over five hundred flu, so I'm assuming the five hundred number up there is accurate, and the one ninety-four is inaccurate.
Correct. I'm still concerned about one of the things that we learned at CCI about jail nursing and opioid addiction, and that we may be forced at some point, or one of these underfunded, underfunded mandates from your governor. That we're gonna have to follow up with folks who are released from jail.
Yeah, it's like they're that.
And provide.
We're gonna track them.
Opiate.
Yeah.
Treatment beyond the time that they serve in jail.
And they suppose they're gonna fund us to do that?
I don't know where the money comes from.
I mean, it's almost ludicrous, huh?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Almost, it is ludicrous.
It's ridiculous. It's like, boy, are we gonna be married to that person the rest of their life, just because they were incarcerated in our jail?
Right. I mean, someone makes a mistake, they get arrested. Maybe they don't make a mistake, they get arrested, and we have to tamper them for the rest of their life? This is nuts.
Yeah, it's crazy.
All right, I'll wash my eyes, horse.
So, let's see. You've indicated he's our governor.
I said your governor.
I know.
Say our.
You said your governor. I'm assuming you mean us.
He meant the.
So he's not your governor.
Well, he is my governor in, in position.
Okay.
I'm not thrilled with him, I will tell you that.
Okay, do you think we are?
I don't know what your philosophy is, although I could, I could strongly guess. Considering the three of us sat there when you walked up to the podium.
Okay, now I just wonder if your governor's gonna change to our governor, if you're gonna leave him.
The governor is what.
Oh, we couldn't be the governor.
All right, I rephrase it. I take it back. The governor of Colorado.
There you go. All right.
Such as he is.
Okay, um. Unfinished business, gentlemen's?
I have not, sir.
I was gonna bring up Kokoman, just only from a point of view of timing. He didn't put in his note, if you noticed, the date.
No.
He wanted the week of the sixteenth. He rambles on about the things we're gonna do, but he hasn't sent out whether, what day it really is yet.
Right, I think he was trying to get consensus on a date, but.
But he said he didn't. He said he's, then he's gonna go get a, uh, VTC kind of thing going, but I'll send a note back to him and ask him what day he's really thinking about, because coming up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Let me throw something out.
Yes, sir.
Now that we're kind of way ahead of schedule and.
Don't ruin it now, Jay.
No, I'm gonna bring up something that you're gonna go, oh, no, you may not. You may go, that idiot. I believe by statute, we need to meet once a month, a minimum. However, we meet four times a month, which is absolutely appropriate. I'm wondering if we can't pick a Commissioner's time where we have maybe a two-week period without a meeting, so that my wife could take me on a cruise or something. Just a question. We really don't, we really have a problem scheduling a vacation for Commissioners because of this, the way we do our schedule. Is it not a complaint? I signed on, understanding what we're getting to do. I'm fine with it. I'm just wondering if maybe once a year, we could skew the schedule such that we could have two weeks off, uh, without a meeting. It's just a thought.
January.
Yeah, January, I, I kinda have forgot about that.
That's why I didn't wanna get into that.
Thing, but, um.
What do we talk about, Jay?
Well, we're going to meet twice, two days in January.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Um, but the second Tuesday in the last.
Yeah, so that's really not a two weeks, is it?
Yeah, it's kinda.
It's just a thought.
No, I, I've thought about it as well, especially since I've had, I've felt an increased pressure serving on the Sangre de Cristo Electric Board of Directors, too. Uh, I have. Really, Dave, hello, sir.
So are the sheriffs.
That's okay. I think we're back up and running. I don't know. Well, Blacky just wanted to throw a fit and stick his head in the ground this morning, so. I don't know. It kept telling me I didn't have the disk space to open a document on my.
Very odd.
Yeah, but now I just opened one, so it seems like it's. I've shut it off twice, back to back.
Rain freeze for a little bit.
Yeah.
If you wanna bring it by on Monday, I'll.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Um, Sangre de Cristo Electric's changed one of their board members to accommodate a conflict because of one of our board members. And then the other day, we talked about moving hours to accommodate one of those conferences, but, uh, yeah, I, I, I talked to a couple Commissioners at CCI about their schedule, because I thought it'd just be interesting to see.
It's kind of.
Our neighbors to the south meet every Tuesday, so they don't get that two-week block either. But they like it, because then they can build the rest of their week around other stuff, knowing they're gonna meet once a week. But no, not really any different than us. We know when we're gonna meet, it's just they meet.
We just double up on days.
Once a week, yeah, so, um, I think it merits some thought. Maybe between now and.
What we've done in the past, too, is if somebody, if you, if you gotta go to somewhere, we can move a meeting.
Right.
As long as we know ahead of time.
Yeah, I understand, but it'd be.
Be nice just to know that that blocks.
I think you're suggesting that if we're gonna do that, let's move it at the beginning of the year at some point, and then we can all look to say, okay, we're gonna have.
Well, I'll be off at the same time.
Two weeks.
Problem with all of us being off is if something occurs, we need to be, somebody needs to be accessible.
Kelly is. They, they used, they used to have, not have a mid-month meeting in December. That's only been.
Right, six weeks of mourning.
Since you guys, yeah.
We don't need.
And that, so then that would leave from that.
Like today.
First, yeah, through the end of the month.
It's, it's just a thought, I'm just, you know. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh.
Always set schedules, deal with it.
Yeah, I. And I guess I don't have strong feeling one way or another. We're not great vacation takers. We should do better, but we just don't as a family.
Man, I got too many kids scattered around.
What is this vacation thing we speak of?
Yeah.
You what?
What is this vacation thing?
I guess it's where you just don't show up to work. I don't know. I never.
You work at home. Huh, that's what my vacations are.
That's what our vacation is.
What I do.
Go in.
Go somewhere.
Go somewhere? That is a radical concept.
Yeah, it is. Although I managed to do it this year, so.
Yeah, you did. You hated everybody.
And now you say you'll never do that again.
No, I won't do that again. I'll go a different direction now. Yeah, I was gonna look here, J and C under, uh, CCI's document that they put out for new Commissioners, see if I could find the statute that deals with the meetings themselves.
I heard that from Dennis Hunt, who's the one who mentioned that to me. I did not actually look at the statute.
Would you hear that he said?
He mentioned it to me one time.
Counties under fifty thousand.
That each Commissioner's required, are required by ordinance or rate, only one statute to meet once a month. He says, nobody does. Everybody meets more than that, but we are required to meet once a month.
Yeah, and like I say, under fifty thousand, over fifty thousand, they have to meet once a week. By statute, yeah. Well, I s, I think it is once a week versus four times.
Is that when they have five Commissioners, right?
Yes, correct.
So they could be one short and still, I mean, if one's said I'm gonna take. So, they could be one short and still, I mean, if one said I'm gonna take two meetings off or something like that.
That's why they get into more things outside the county than we do.
Right.
Because they got to do it
Well, yeah, that is, no, I get it.
Keep the meetings going.
The other thing about, and I thought about this, too
Let me out, I'm getting some mud, I'm not leaving.
That The reason those commissioners get more involved in state office, because they typically, those more than 50,000 people, they're on the front range. It's easy for them to go to Denver, those meetings. It's a little tough for us to get on those committees, steering committees. I thought about
You know, there are several of the state committees I would be interested in joining, but I think the same way you do. It kills an entire day to go to one-hour meeting.
Yeah.
I don't get it. It doesn't, it's just not
Well, and if you wanted to go to the steering committee meeting, which I did last year, I went to two of them, you gotta go up either the night before, well, you have to go the night before, because they start at eight o'clock in the morning.
Yes, no doubt. And I'm very cautious about turning expense reports and spending county money.
Speaking of that, I thought I saw your voucher in your mailbox. What are you gonna turn it in the first?
Oh, you know, I'll give it, yes, you're good.
I wouldn't turn anything in.
No.
Uh, well, cell phone, you see? That was from November or December.
I don't know, I'd never turn this thing down.
What are you guys doing? Still vacating?
No.
I agree with you, I would like to do a couple more things outside the county. But I'm doing Action 22, and roads, the byways thing, I'm having a hard time with the byways.
Difficult. Yeah, well, those meet down here in Southern Colorado.
Well, yeah, at least you can drive to Pueblo or you go to Colorado City, but
I go to the CDOT meetings, and those are in Colorado Springs, but the Denver ones are really a problem.
Well, yeah.
I'd like to sit in a legislative session, haven't
You know, I went to underfunding, went up the night before. I ended up staying in a Well, it wasn't, I mean, it was reasonable, but
He's on coal faxes.
Eighty dollars a night.
He's raised to 250. Eighty's really good.
Get downtown, forget it. I couldn't get a room downtown for less than 400 bucks.
What?
Yeah, so I said, I'll drive in. So
400, crazy.
So I just wanted to turn that fuck up there and see.
If you get to a new court meeting downtown Denver, you probably need to leave here at four, at the latest.
Right.
Downtown is a whole nother bargain, you just don't drive in apart.
I left at 4:30 the other day when I hit the underfunda
Did you?
I got a three, I think.
Yeah, that's brutal.
Yeah, but they were ahead of me, but I got there, and I did the same thing, but at six, I think.
Okay, let's move on. Consideration of funding the audio project for the boardroom. As you're very well aware of, I submitted a grant to SIPA for that, Statewide Internet Portal Authority, and I talked with those folks at CCI, two gals there, and I said, I need to ask you a question. I said, is SIPA grants reimbursable grants? And she said, no.
I was there.
And I said, do you have to, that's right, we stood there together, didn't we?
Yes.
And I said, well, do we, can we expend the money before we get the grant? She said, absolutely, if you want to, that's fine. So my thinking, and I told her that, I said, well, the reason I'm asking is if we, if we wait until those funds are dispersed by SIPA, which are April, mid-April, we're four months, that's 16 more meetings, without any audio help.
Are they guaranteed to get them?
No, she said now. She said, if you wanna spend the money, she said, if you have the money and you think it's a need, which obviously you do, or you wouldn't have submitted a grant for it, you can, you can do it now, and we'll, and you'll just reimburse yourself.
What group does it, are they sympathetic to little counties?
Yes, very, very sympathetic.
Yeah, and it's technology, I mean, that's what it's all about. That's what they fund, it's technology only, so
We've got my eleven to pay.
Oh, yeah, that's what paid for the live streaming. Yeah, so
I guess the question would be, what does our building and maintenance budget look like? Because I would suspect that would be an appropriate place to take it. We're talking about $3,600-ish?
Yeah, $3,600. I talked to Donna about that, and Donna suggested we take it out of capital improvement versus building and plant.
And I'll follow that.
And she said, we'd be fine.
I think there's enough in there.
Oh, yeah.
A lot more of the risk.
I think this is something that our constituency really needs. I, for one, know that I'm not loud enough at times, unintentionally. I know, I've heard many comments about when people speak, sitting in that chair with their back to the camera.
Nobody can hear you.
Right. They can hear the front row, but people speaking in the back, they're not. I think since we've gone the step of live streaming, it just makes sense to me to go to an audio system. I'm assuming it'll somehow be tied into this system.
That'd go a step further, I would, we have, right, for example, we got Sally Clark coming, and she's got somebody calling in to talk to us. They need a sort of like a VTC capability, I wouldn't go that far, maybe, but somebody, so that they can hear us, and we can hear them on the phone better. And the people that are here can hear who we're discussing it. I know we've had problems at Wetmore, for example, or even here.
Right.
And you get the real deal. Now, you run a risk doing that, too, because live streaming, sort of like a live VTC, you get a lot of people calling in, maybe, to ask questions on a public comment, which maybe's not that big a deal either, I don't know. But that would be great to have that technology to do that.
So how about we put consideration of this on the next, the 18th meeting, and we could either vote to
That's why I put consideration of it today. I was hoping to begin to
Why can't we do it today?
Excuse me, I guess if I did my homework and read that part of it, I would have known. So I move?
Now. You may continue, and then I'll, we'll have some more discussion, that's fine.
Okay, well, if we do that, I would, I would say I, I move that we allocate $3,600 from capital reserve to purchase a audio system for the commissioner's room to assist in disseminating information to the public when we have meetings.
I'll second it, so we can talk.
And just a twenty minutes, capital improvement, not capital
SIP, I'm sorry, capital improvement, I meant to say that.
I thought you did, so
So I'll second it.
Because it's been moved and seconded that we authorize expenditure of up to $3,600 out of capital improvement for audio upgrade to the boardroom. Discussion.
Yeah, let me, maybe you wanna amend it, only from this point of view. I think we oughta get Vern, or whoever, to get, let's assess what we really need to do it right, rather than capping it at $3,600 now. I'd like to see a sort of, you know, I can see a projector down there, so we can project stuff up here, or onto the, onto the computers or whatever, so we can see what people are talking about. I see microphones, I see speakers of ETC capability, whatever it is. We oughta get a system proposed, so we can take a look at it and see what the costs are. Don't you think, before
Well, I sent you an email with that. That's been done, not the video, but
Not, but I know that, I know that the, just putting in a microphone thing, he's looked at.
All right, well, Vern and I spoke about, was four microphones at this table, one for each of us, one for whoever's presenting to us, and then two additional ones
Hanging around.
In the audience, just maybe hanging from the ceiling or something. Whatever's the appropriate way to do that, so that we're But your point about, are we, are ourselves short about maybe not adding audiovisual, too, is a fair question. I guess the real question is, as long as I've been here, I can't think of four or five times we had to pull that screen down and actually use it.
That's because we don't have the capability.
Well, and it's a good point. I mean, if we had it, would we use it more, or are we just really
And it's transferable, and if we move, and you can take
Yeah, I mean, when we needed it, we'd just pull the screen down, we'd plug in a projector and run it. This, here's the document that went with the grant. It was about improving the audio. That's what I wrote the grant for.
Correct, yeah.
So, if we wanna write another grant later on, do the audio or the visual part of it, we can do that, but I sent this document to you this morning, so you would So you can see those
So this would include the capability to make sure that the speakerphone, when we have somebody dialing in, can be heard by everybody?
Well, yeah, we've already got that.
Well, it's not very good.
Wherever that cabinet went, actually, back there, that cabinet, so
Actually, I thought that only worked pretty
Yeah.
This is latter, for sure.
Which?
The one they're doing. So, maybe we don't need it.
I felt like it functioned real well when you called in.
Hit it.
Yes, sir.
Will this stuff be, I mean, will you be able to take it to Wetmore?
Uh
Portable?
Because there's real problems down there. I wonder if you should
Make it broader?
Have something that you can take to Wetmore, or leave in Wetmore. Those people wanna hear, too, and it's really hard to hear down there.
Well, maybe that's a good idea, it can be big enough.
Because it's such a big room.
A little portable thing, with a microphone back there for them, maybe, I don't know. Don't need a permanent system.
There's no portability into this, this was designed, spec'd out for this room, but your point's well taken.
Yeah, right, but should we do something additionally to Wetmore?
Sure.
And then I guess, you know, if you really wanna get carried away, what about the airport, what about San Isabelle?
That system would be a portable one, I think. In my eyes, you could set up a couple of speakers and a mic to walk around. That would be okay.
You mean kind of a separate little speaker?
Sure, a couple of microphones on the table, and pass it to each other.
That'd be a separate deal, but
And I would be able to take it to San Isabelle if they wanted, or the airport.
San Isabelle was so hard to hear this year. Since they moved, since they redesigned that
It's always got their motors going in the back.
That thing down there, it was bad.
No, I mean, musicians are carrying around a little amp and having no problem.
Right.
The other thing I think you oughta consider is to have, to have Vernon come up with a plan for you guys, in case you want to meet with somebody in a video format. Like I talked about yesterday, you know, twice yesterday, you guys said, you know, we want so-and-so to drive down here from whatever to meet with us. Well, he could do that from his desk.
We could Skype.
Skyping.
Right, right.
Tie in and have him talk to you.
And it could go right up there to the, you know
To the projector on
You know, I mean, you can have a projector, I'm sure we have one.
Or onto our computer. So the question is, go back to the motions. We oughta allow for the two things we've talked about, the ability to include capability of some sort for portability, and
I tell you how I feel, I think your point is extremely well-taken, and I appreciate it, but I think for this particular motion, and you can vote it down, and then make a difference if you choose, since we already have the SIPA grant requested for this amount The scope of the project
Thirty-six hundred bucks?
Hang on a second, please. The scope of the project, at least to this point, was for this room. I would, I would feel more comfortable moving on that, and then you can turn around and make another motion for something different if you want.
Use our capital investment anyway, then it's not gonna be that expensive for the additional thing, maybe, so I'm good with it. I didn't know that
Your point is very well-taken about a portable system
Right, that's what the grant was written for, $3,600.
A portable system makes sense. However, it wasn't what
Right.
I envisioned at the time I made the motion.
Right, yeah, I didn't realize that either.
Well, and it wasn't what we wrote the grant for.
Correct, and that's where I'm going with that.
I am good with that.
I don't disagree either, that there's a need there, I just don't think it is applicable to what we're talking about here.
That's kinda how I feel.
That's sort of how it came up.
All right. So the intent was, that, why I put it on the agenda in the form of consideration, if we did pass this, then I would get with Vern, we would get this equipment purchased. I will, my intention is, by January, meetings, to have the table done, we're gonna incorporate some of this into that table. The power strip, the mic, the mics will actually attach to the table itself. So we'd like to get this equipment purchased between now and the first of the year, so that in January, hopefully, we get started with the whole new system.
The only question I had then is, would be, $3,600, do we have it in the capital investment fund?
Capital improvement, yeah.
Whatever it is, plan now, that if we never got reimbursed, it's gonna be paid for, and we'll absorb it, next year's budget'd be fine.
Exactly.
It'd be nice to be reimbursed, then we got the $3,600 bucks to go do some other improvements.
Yeah, your point's well-taken. I'd rather risk the $3,600 and get it going, instead of waiting until April. Because I think it's a need, whether we get the grant or not, I still think we should spend the money to get that done. Now, obviously, we'll cross this bridge when we get to it, but that means we're gonna have to change our format a little bit, that we're gonna speak into microphones. But hopefully, I won't have to be slide back, so you guys can see each other.
Coming down, I've seen the ones that hang, and they're very good, omnidirectional. We just gotta see what Vern
I trust Vern to recommend the right thing to us.
That's what I told him, I said, you recommend what you think. I think these are gonna be mounted microphones, similar to what's in the courthouse, so I don't, but
See what they can come up with.
I've been around those ceiling-hung mics, I've seen them in a couple other commissioner changes, and I don't think they're very effective.
Depends on how they work them, right?
Because I sit with my back to part of those people in upper arc, it's a guessing game what they're talking about.
I don't think they know how to work.
For them to work, they gotta get hung down where you can get to them, but I asked Vern, do you do what you think is best for our
I've seen the technology in the aerospace industry, Lockheed, Bradshaw, ones that hang down are about this high, and they work really well. If they, you balance them out, right? Now, I don't know if it can happen, but let's let it
Well, I just asked Vern to recommend what he thought would be best for our application, so that's where we're at. If you wanna make a change in that, then
Well, it's not a change, he's gotta come up with a mic program.
Well, it's right here, these are what we're buying.
Oh, he spec'd out the actual equipment?
Yeah.
And put that part?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So
Now, let me talk to him.
So we either go with this, or we don't. We gotta decide that today, because I'm gonna tell him to order this equipment, unless we're gonna do something different.
There's a motion second on the table, I guess we can take a vote and see if we're gonna
One quick question, though, yeah. So what are we doing, does he have something to pass a mic around to the people talking back to us, or not?
No.
So people are not gonna hear a question when public comments are there?
We can, we can add that, it's an eight-channel mixer. So we could always add those wireless mics if we wanted to.
See, that's the advantage of the stuff hanging See, that's the advantage of the stuff hanging.
I was under the impression he was going to hang two in this room.
And that may be included in this wireless mesh. I can ask him about that, but.
Do we have to come over here?
Well, if you can, but you can talk, just, we can ask him. Have him come over.
We got time.
We got time. We got five more minutes.
Five minutes? Heck, if we work off yesterday's schedule, we got five hours. Whoever.
Uh-oh. Come in, come in, come in. Yeah, but we're kind of in the middle of a hiatus.
Little recess.
Can we do a recess?
Yeah, let's go to recess for a few minutes. Because we're waiting on Vern to expend the thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-three thousand six hundred five dollars on our grant request. Some questions.
Okay, just don't sneeze this way. Sneze over there.
I've got your documents pulled up here. Did that include any ceiling hung mic for the audience or not? I can't remember.
So the mics are on pad about yea big, a little boom, and they are wireless. And they can be moved anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, there's actually eight, eight wireless mics. So we could hang one from the ceiling right there if that's what, if you feel so inclined.
And are they, what's the range? So if you had maybe one in this side or any.
I probably need two, probably need two back there, yeah, to pick up, to pick up both sides. So one, two, three, four.
And does that feed into the audio on either one of these systems so that people that are live streaming can hear the questions and then hear us talking about it over, over boost it so it'll distort the sound? They're getting already distorted?
We'll have to tweak it a bit, because each one of these, each one of these channels has, has basically a gain amplifier on it. So if somebody's speaking a little bit louder, let's say Cliff decides to speak louder, Kara can actually turn it down or something like that.
So it's got a master panel?
It's got a master panel that'll actually sit back there. We won't have to have this here anymore.
See, that's a problem with the. They don't pay attention. They got mics hanging, they can hear.
I understand that. And that's, so this, this mic system, it's got the eight, it's got the eight microphones, and it feeds wirelessly to a control box, which acts as a mixer. Whenever you have multiple microphones, you have to have a mixer to be able to control the audio levels. Otherwise, they distort each other. So they feed into a mixer box, and that mixer box would then plug into this here, and the audio that went through that mixer would go through there.
So another problem.
So the streaming will, you can actually hear the stream.
Amplified.
Exactly, exactly.
The only other thing, from a musician's point of view, you get feedback. If there's a mic, a speaker blasting this way, and a mic picking it up here, and another mic that's picking.
And we haven't, we did, I did, I did actually talk about the Bose speaker to put over there that would broadcast. We'll have to, that's why Kara would have to be able to adjust that if that's the case. It'll be, we'll do some fine tuning. It's not like we'll just plug it in and start.
Sounds like a pretty good system.
It's, it's the research I did, we could create what we need. Well, the Bose system is the speaker. The speaker, those are some of the best Bluetooth-enabled or wireless-enabled speakers there are. I've actually seen them in a conference where a little box about this big did the work of four big speakers. Doesn't last long on the battery, but it does well. Yes, exactly, exactly. So that's what I was proposing with that.
Yeah, Commissioner Kanda had asked about the suspended microphones.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't.
I looked at, I looked at the wired microphones, but, and if this was a drop ceiling, I would have gone with the wired microphones, but as it is, we will have, yeah, having wires run through here would not look very nice. So the wireless, the wireless system seems to be the most dynamic that we can use.
That being said, if we wanted to take this system to Wetmore, could we?
Yep, yeah. It would just be a matter of, be a matter of taking the camera and the, and the little box about yea big, and I'll put it into like a briefcase deal with, and we'll label everything so it all can be plugged in together.
You don't mean camera?
We got a live stream.
Well, if you wanted to live stream, yeah, if you wanted to do everything, yeah, we could do that. It's a modular system, so it's not too difficult.
Tear down easy, no?
Yeah.
But could you take the audio without taking the camera?
I could do that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, that's kind of what I was asking about, was I hadn't thought really about taking the audio or the live stream there, but.
So for the future, if the BTC kind of thing or getting people that are calling in, want to do a Skype kind of, can you adapt to that later on?
It would be a little bit more interesting. Incorporating Skype directly into the live stream would be.
Pretty hard.
It's, it's not difficult, but it would require another computer and someone sitting there logging in.
We could do that.
Making certain that everything was balanced, so. But, but as a speaker, as the lives, or excuse me, as a Skype speaker picking up a microphone, that wouldn't be too difficult, no.
And so from a, from a live stream today, the way we are now with the Bose speakers, it would be a bit more beneficial to the audio that we currently have?
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed. Because right now, we're basic, we basically pick up everything on this little dealio right here.
And that was really kind of the driver, right? There was two of them. One, we wanted to increase the audio here in this room, plus two, we wanted to increase, improve the quality of audio on our live stream.
So can you bring the audio in wirelessly into the live stream rather than picking them up on a little mic? Are you still going to use that little mic?
Well, no, we're not going to, no, no, we'll use, we'll use that box that I mentioned, mixer box. We'll plug directly into here.
Okay, so it is a direct.
Back there, we won't have to set up here.
And that's really?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, it'll be a direct audio amplification into the live stream.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And that to give Karen a raise?
It's going to be, call those guys that run those.
Audio engineer. Oh, yeah, DJ, yeah.
So she is getting a raise because this grant includes a computer for her back there, so that's part of it, right? The new Dell computer will sit back there.
And then I worked in an overhead projector and the power strips and cables and stuff like that. So, yeah, because, you know, having a nice overhead projector for presentations would work out well. And like if we went in, and this could be switched over directly to the, to the courtroom, too.
So we could take it in there or plug into their system?
I would take it in there. Their system, I don't like to play with the state sandbox.
I like it, so let's do it.
All right, sir, well, thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Did you want that?
No.
All right. I'm trying.
Forget you holding your sneeze.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, further discussion. Hearing none will proceed to public comment. Sorry. Hearing none will proceed to votes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed nay.
I couldn't hear Clint, or Jay. Can you amplify him for me?
We'll amplify him, yeah. We'll amplify him, so. All right, well, good. We'll see how things progress with the, with the SIPA grant, but those ladies were pretty excited that.
Very nice.
They said they were going to.
Just down their alley, huh?
Carry our torch for us to the board that actually votes on the grants. Those two gals didn't do, they weren't voting members, but hello, sir. So consideration of transfer of funds to the Conservation Trust Fund. Is that you, Ms. Kelly?
She's begging again.
So this is a thousand two hundred twenty-two ninety-seven from the General Fund to the Conservation Fund. And what it is, is for, we do this every December, it's for interest earned.
Okay.
I move we, do you want to say transfer this money or do we?
Yeah, transfer from the General Fund.
Well, the one thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars ninety-seven cents from the General Fund to the Conservation Trust Fund.
I'll send.
Been moved and seconded to transfer one down, two hundred twenty-two dollars ninety-seven cents from the General Fund to the Conservation Trust Fund discussion. Kelly, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Easy.
Public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed nay. Motion carries. Do we have that document to sign?
I'm the one that signs this one.
Oh, you just signed it? Okay, perfect, all right, good. Thank you all. And in consideration of notice for the statutory and non-statutory legal publication bids for 2020, we have copies of last year's letters, if you'd like to refer to those, gentlemen. We'll start with Sangre de Cristo Sentinel first.
What email's that?
This just is a copy of last year's letter, so we would need to make the necessary changes on the dates, but I thought the rest of it was probably applicable.
Did you send that out on an email?
Yes, I'm just.
Yeah.
I don't remember sending it out.
May not. I can email these to you, gentlemen.
I'm printing them out right now if y'all would like to.
Yeah.
I pulled them off of last year's board packets where I got them.
There's no changes, really?
Well, that's what.
Our request forbid, is all that is.
That's what we've got to decide, is if we're making any changes or not, but.
What I meant was, the formats.
I don't have any reason to change the format myself. I mean, for what little I know about it, actually, but. We'll need to select whatever dates we want. Generally, this needs to be done before January meeting, or, yes.
Bids have to be in.
Yeah. So we meet on the 31st of December?
We do.
So I would say we probably ought to have these back.
Twenty-seventh?
Well, yeah.
For the 31st meeting?
Or you didn't do the 30th?
I would say the 30th, then.
And open them on the 31st.
Open on 31st.
What did we say here? How come it did it this way last year, this 21st we had?
Bids will be opened on the 31st of.
Because I think we did it during the mid-month meeting last year.
Well, we did it on the 5th.
No.
Is when we said to go after it, and we asked them to return the bids at 4:00 PM on the 21st.
Says the bids that they opened on the 31st.
Right, and so now we're going to change that to the 30th. Is that, you guys?
If nobody's going to be here, Kelly's gone on vacation.
Yeah, going on a cruise.
So let's see, I changed these dates. Let's check and see if they line up with what we talked about, actually. So December the 6th is when we're.
So we're talking about it.
Requesting the 2020 publications. Oops. Uh, requesting bids for the upcoming year 2020.
2020.
And paragraph three will be accepted.
4:00 PM on.
Until 4:00 PM on December 30th.
What day is that?
Friday.
No, it's Monday.
Oh, 30th is Monday, sorry, yeah. Seal bids will be opened during the regular BOCC meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Correct?
Did you get this just right there?
Hold on just a second, sir.
30th?
Yes. Uh, Tuesday, December 31st.
Nineteen.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
It was just a five.
Good. Can air it if you'd like.
No.
So the only 2020 date on this document is the last word of the first paragraph or the last.
No.
No, the very last one.
Second line, too.
There's two.
I'm sorry, I had it there and just missed it. Yeah, already.
Or one? No, there's two, one.
A deadline, an opening, and an awarding? Is that?
Well, we voted to do it in 19 for the 2020 publication. Really, it's duplicated in there twice in the first paragraphs. Doesn't really need to be, but other than that.
I think the last line is kind of wrong. The BOCC reserves the right to accept or reject any and all bids. You can't reject them all, because we have to have a publication record.
We could reject those bids and re-request.
Make them redo them.
Well, I guess you could do that.
That's how that happens. Let them begin to read this.
Say, we're not going to accept even one of these bids. They can come in lower, or, and then I have this question.
There's a state, a place, they do it online.
Right.
Can we do this online?
That was my question with Kelly this morning, is do we need to consider online paper? Our conversation was probably not, but.
Well, but we have a third question now. I'm pointing that way, because Tracy often sits out there. She would give her an opportunity to bid also, if an online is acceptable, and I think this is.
That's apples and oranges. It would be really hard for a print, and I don't care, but a print paper could not possibly compete with.
No, no.
Because it costs you nothing to post it.
It has to be printed, because there are people that don't bid online.
We don't know.
It has to be printed.
If the statute says that, I'll agree with you. If the statute doesn't, I won't agree with you.
Right. Yeah, and I was going to look that up this morning after I talked to Kelly.
You did lose the.
Well, I think there is a state site or, I know Laura has told me about it, that.
I have looked this before.
That all of this stuff is posted to anyway. So I don't know whether you're required to do it in a print paper. It's just, you know, I don't.
I don't know, but I'd sure like to know the answer before I order this to anybody personally.
Well, we can sure take a recess and find out. It's just.
Call Clint, see if he's on it.
I think I can, I got it in my file. I think I could put my hands on it pretty quickly.
Okay. You will look? I'll continue to look here as well, but I don't even really know what to look under. I thought notification, but maybe under legal notice? I mean, I don't even know where to look, Jay, would you have any idea?
I don't remember.
You'll call Dennis, huh?
There was actually a website that talks about this, because that's where I got my information. Because I think I did this first, West Cliff at one point, the question came up, how do we have to do this? I don't remember the answer.
Are we taking another recess?
Uh, we can, if you want, yes.
And I'm not trying to create issues, I'm just trying to make sure that.
Well, I asked you this morning.
I want the information so that I can make a good decision, that's all I'm concerned about.
Because I thought the same thing. Do we need to? Legal notice.
So it says Colorado law requires that all public notices and legal advertisements published in Colorado newspapers be uploaded to a centralized website maintained by the Colorado Press Association. So that's probably what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with that. I knew they were all online also, but the real question is, do they need to be?
It's in 24.
Yeah, 24, 27, I think, isn't it?
24, 6.
24, 6?
Oh, no, 20, yeah, 24, 6. 402.
CRS 24, 6, what? 402?
402. 2C.
Any meetings. That's talking about public notice of meetings, no less than 24 hours, so that's not.
Oh, yeah.
24, 71, 03.
We could have Kara do all this here.
24, 71, 08.
She knows all these.
Designate the official newspaper of the county, 24, 71, 08.
Okay. Designation of legal newspaper.
Smoke off the table.
In all cases in court, in all cases in prison, by in court.
Jesus, Clinton, House Brady, Clinton. Whatever he has, I don't.
Uh, where in the law requires publication of a legal notice or advertisement, or said legal notice or advertisement is published. The party.
Use Jeremy.
That's not really it either, Kel.
Well, it's not so much.
Said newspaper, this is about indebtedness.
Well, it says the board shall designate the official newspaper of the county, CRS 24, 71, 08.
Said newspaper shall be a legal newspaper defined by law and shall be published in the county where such publication is required to be made by law or rule of the civil procedure.
It has to be published 52-week consecutive weeks prior to the first issue that you guys use it.
Wow, I do remember initially talking about that. I don't see where that's at, but.
That's in 24, 71, 03.
103. Requisite of a legal newspaper, any and every legal notice or advertisement shall be published only in a daily, tri-weekly, semi-weekly, or weekly newspaper of general circulation and printed or published in whole or in part in the county in which such notice of advertisement is required. The newspaper shall have been so published in such a county continuously and uninterrupted during the period of at least 52 consecutive weeks next prior to the first issue there containing any such notice or advertisement." So, for this year, that answers the question.
Which means that, which means that you have a little time to get...
Right.
To get the answer.
She wouldn't qualify.
What did it say, I didn't hear it clear.
I was reading it to you.
I was busy, I'm sorry.
Fifty, the paper has to be...
Thank you.
...continuously and uninterrupted during the period of at least 52.
They ended it right there, it has to be in existence at least a year, 'cause I remember when the Sentinel first came in.
Right, they didn't qualify.
They had to wait for the year before they could qualify, I remember that.
Yeah.
Okay, no, so she's not an issue regardless.
Which means that you have a little time to run that down and find out whether she qualifies for next year.
Right, no, that's a good point.
Okay, my wife's from Arizona, never saw us film till we got here.
You're welcome. Oh, I've enjoyed some Googling.
Yes, but I don't see anything where it speaks specifically to an online newspaper, so...
It'll be dark.
But I agree with Jackie, that's comparing apples and oranges when you're looking at competitors' bids.
There's no way that, I mean, she could, she could say, "I'll do it for $10 a year." $10 a year, exactly.
But that's not, whether it's equitable or not, if it's legal or not.
All right, well, I gotta let you go. Thanks a lot.
We're talking about whether it's ethical.
I will, thanks.
Right.
Well, I mean...
I don't, I...
Gotta be printed, right?
I have a horse in this race, but in this conversation, I don't care.
Dennis Hunt just told me it had to be printed.
Yeah, I just read the law, the lawsuit.
He read it to me, 24 dash whatever it is, 103, and he says it has to be published in a news, however it reads, and that's how he interpreted it.
Well, it's printed or published is what...
Yeah, printed and published.
No.
Was it an or?
24, 70, we said.
Anyway, that's what Dennis just told me, he read the, he read the thing out as well.
Well, it also, Bill, while you were on the phone, it also says it has, the paper has to have been run consecutively for 52 weeks before the first publication.
Oh, is that right?
Hers is new, so it would work this week, this year, but it might work next year.
Uh, "Any and every legal notice or advertisement shall be published only in a daily, tri-weekly, semi-weekly, weekly newspaper, and printed or published in whole."
And therein lies the legal issue.
What's published?
Published.
That's why he said printed.
Yeah.
Is it published to a website?
Sure.
Could be, we don't know the answer for sure, we know, we know the issue is right now, two newspapers, because one doesn't qualify, but it's an issue that may arise next year.
Yeah, we...
Okay.
So, are we okay with the draft to Sangre de Cristal Sentinel? If we are, then I'll minimize that and we'll look at the, at the...
Wordings should be the same.
These letters are identical, right, we're just changing dates.
I would just cut and paste it.
Sentinel and the Tribune are exactly the same.
Are they okay? I'm just looking.
Yeah, they are, I'm looking at that right now.
So, today is the 6th.
Flop it right over.
2019, save that.
Yeah, there's no, there's no difference between the letters other than who it's going to.
Do, Chair would entertain a motion to the effect?
The effect is, I move that we, we've made edits to it, so that we...
Submit proposals to the two newspapers.
Yeah, send, it's just the two newspapers, so let's send the proposal for two newspapers to bid on the statutory legal publications bids for 2020.
Okay, all right, I'll second it, I'm moving to second it to notify both papers of the request for bids for 2020.
Legal publication bids for 2020.
Just for the discussion, um, just to bring this up, we're talking about legal publications, we're not talking about, would that include, this is a question, not a criticism, is, does it include want ads for openings and any other publication that we do within the county?
It can use statutory and non-statutory, it says.
Oh, and then non-statutory.
The letter says the bid is to include the cost for countywide publications as required under 24, 71, 01, legal notice or advertisement, privately supported legal notice or advertisement.
So, based on the bids, the bids should then have statutory bid and non-statutory.
Yeah, they always do.
And the assumption to me would be then, if we chose to, we could pick the lower bid for one and the lower bid for the other, which may not be the same paper, does that make sense? I'm just asking.
That's a good question, I wonder if, you know, if the publishers of said papers would be assuming that, that if they, you know, to package deal.
Right.
You know, I don't know, I've never seen, as long as I've...
I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
Good question, if I was in the newspaper business, I'd bid it thinking I'm gonna get them both and try to be a little more...
If that's the case, then what we ought to do is just ask for a bid based upon pica, nine pica, and whatever the inch is that they...
That's right, that's what we did last year.
Yeah, and not even segregate statutory, non-statutory, if that's what we wanna do.
Well, the only place that statutory and non-statutory is mentioned in this is in the title, in the, in the regard line.
Didn't it say it in the, in the law?
We could drag this meeting until one if we do my heart.
No, no, let's stop dragging this on.
So, 24, 71...
I think the guys know what to submit, they've been doing it long enough.
Right, the big question is, do we know what we're really asking for?
It makes sense to have one official newspaper for the county, now oftentimes when there's job openings and things, we've sent it to both, and that's just a choice that the department makes, but it makes sense to me there should be one official newspaper for the county, whoever that is.
And I think the statute sort of implies that, when they set it up from that first paragraph.
I didn't read that, I read it, Kel.
Yeah, so...
A publication.
Well, there's a guy down in Pueblo that has...
I know, it's a little 400 circulation news, like bulletin, basically.
For places, so it doesn't even have to be...
Right.
Right.
So, the...
This has to be in the county.
Obviously, legal notice or advertisement means any notice or other written matter required to be published, we're not required to publish a request, a position, vacancy announcement, we're not required to do that, that's not a legal notice.
And then it's statutory versus non-statutory is the question, and then we should decide, do we want a single newspaper for the county for all publications, or...
Right.
I mean, that's a question, that should be on the table.
Further discussion, here you can then proceed to vote on the way these letters will be or are written and will be sent out.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
We can wrangle with when we get the bids in.
Well...
Here's my, here's my issue, and I know I just voted yes, so I'm not trying to circumvent anything, but if, newspaper A, newspaper B, newspaper A says, here's what I'm gonna do for statutory, here's what I'm gonna do for non-statutory, paper B says, here's my bid, we don't have apples and oranges to compare, that's what I'm concerned about.
We do the way it's written here, Jay.
They both broke it up.
Read the way it's written.
They both offered both, because they're different.
And that'll solve the issue.
Well, that's because we said to do it that way in the third, the second pair.
Well, not for non-statutory.
No, well, we said for legal notice or advertisement, we said it.
Yeah, I think, I think the editors both know how to do it.
Okay, let's see what comes in.
I agree with you, but, well, legal notice or advertisement as required by statute.
It doesn't say by statute, it says that, that can be our requirement.
24, 71, 01 does say that, though, Bill.
The advertisement, it doesn't say advertisement.
Yes, I just...
Well, wait, 24, 71.
Yeah, so, to me, this covers the statutory portion, this letter, really, it doesn't cover the non-statutory.
Are there statutory advertisements?
Except that advertisements are statutory.
The advertisements are not statutory, they're not.
Yes, sir.
It says or, Tom, and or, it said and advertising.
Like if I could have held one of that and it's not statutory.
That's right.
That's correct.
No statutory.
So, you pay the non-statutory rate.
Right, that's right.
But there is statutory advertisements.
You could just send a letter and say, "Send your bids like you always do."
Yeah.
Look at them.
There's a problem with that, we continue to operate in an ignorant state, we're trying to cure that.
We're curing our ignorancy.
On the one day that your attorney's not...
We'll open it up when the bids come in.
Well...
You have one of those little... No, you know one I'm talking about, those little red things, tabs.
Like, you're signing here tabs?
Yeah.
Yes.
Some tab like that, Tom, we'll put it there and we can flip right to it every time we argue about this.
So, 24, 71, 01, legal notice or advertisement means any notice required to be published in a newspaper.
And that's the question, required, required is the issue, I'm reading it right here, I'm at the statutes as we speak.
That is statute.
That's correct.
We can advertise in the paper without being statutory, they're talking about legal notices, statutory notices, or advertising, right, because we may have to add legally.
What falls under statutory advertisements?
I don't know, I never...
I wonder, because, because a RFP would be, would that be an advertisement?
Well, required to be published in a newspaper by any law of this state, or by the ordinances of any county.
That would be our requirement.
See, those would be statutory, non-statutory is if Guinevere puts her vacancy notice in the paper.
Yeah, she can do whatever she wants.
Same when we advertise, so...
And I think we have always taken the stance, to the best of my knowledge at least, that every ad, or everything that we publish in a newspaper must go to our paper of record, and then we choose what goes to the other one.
Exactly.
However, I'm feeling that we don't have to do that, based upon what I'm reading.
Have to do the other one.
The non-statutory, but we always have, I mean, it's tradition.
It's our choice.
Tradition, okay. Because I think this is an important question.
Yeah, well, really, the letter should have another paragraph in it, technically, in my opinion, and that would be, if so true, bid your non-statutory.
Great, Virginia's got some input on that, non-statutory.
You're listening.
I don't think, because she cares about this life story.
That's why I put one of these out.
Yes, ma'am.
My statutory is, okay, I have to publish through you guys because you have to publish the semi-annual, that's statutory. In my office, non-statutory is a pass-through, I have to statutorily do the tax lien sale, but it's a pass-through, so it's a non-statutory, because the county doesn't get charged for it.
Oh, I see, so the other organization's paying for it.
So, I pay the non-statutory fee for the...
So, they charge us the non-statutory for the tax lien and for my personal property, but they get charged the statutory for the semi-annual.
Yeah, because that's a county, county...
Well, it does say that they are quoting it two different ways.
Right.
I mean, look at the bids from last year, but...
I have them with you.
Last year, they were...
For the two papers here in the county, yeah.
And they were both on the same paragraph, and they both were high on one.
I personally feel, I know we voted to approve this, and that's why I was so hesitant to say yes, I think we ought to, just so there's not a question there, and I don't want either newspaper to get upset with us because they felt something and we did something different, let's just clearly state, please bid separately for statutory, and if your bid is different for non-statutory, please bid accordingly, or something to that effect.
But you start splitting hairs, we'd go down the path, remember, the Tribune last year said we have a bigger circulation in the Sentinel, so therefore we have cheaper ones.
Bill, Bill, you're way beyond what we're talking about here.
I know, I'm just saying, but we're, I...
We've already decided...
I don't have that choice.
That we could do statutory, non-statutory, we don't have to use the same paper, so all I'm saying is, we ought to ask both papers to bid both, that's all I'm saying, I am not going into who's got more circulation.
Gotcha, no, no, I don't wanna do that either, I'm just saying.
So, yeah, this was for Sangre, Whitmount Tribune was 25 cents for non-statutory and, and, sorry, statutory at nine cents, non-statutory 25, Sangre de Cristal Sentinel, 15 cents for the first insertion, statutory was 15 cents, non-statutory was 30.
Okay.
So, it was bid just the way we're talking, but this letter doesn't really request that.
And that's what I'm thinking, thank you so much, Mr....
Thank you, ma'am.
I think it ought to do that, so that we're clear, I'm just concerned it's gonna come back later and say, "Wait a minute, I just bid a price."
What's the language? Bid on non-statutory.
So, what I would recommend is then is for this to say, "This bid is to include the cost for statutory and non-statutory notices for countywide publications."
That applies to me, you're looking for one number for both, the way you said, just said it.
Well, okay.
So, I would say, this bid is to include the costs for statutory and non-statutory notices. Okay, the S at the end, the cost, that clears it up, okay, I can go with that.
Well, read, read that paragraph, and it says, "The bid is to include the cost of countywide publications as required under the statute, blah, blah, legal notices or advertisement, number two, privately supported legal notice or advertisement, number three, publicly supported legal notice or advertisement." So, where, where do we insert statutory, non-statutory?
I would suggest to insert the words, "The bid is to include the cost for statutory and non-statutory legal notices for countywide publications."
Just continue on like you did.
Right, but, now, we really can't reconsider this item of business because we have to have another...
I'm hesitant again.
Why I was so hesitant to say yes.
Yeah, I get it.
It's just another fight, man.
So, in order to reconsider this, there has to be an item of business conducted between the motion you wanna reconsider and the motion to reconsider, so, um, we could withdraw that motion if you wanna add the words, or we can send it like it is, we'll get what we want, but, to your point, I don't think it's working very well.
Right, I second, sorry, it been approved. How would you feel, this question now, how would you feel if we get one paper gives us both, one gives one, say, we don't have an, well, we can't ask them to rebid it because we didn't like what they did, I mean, we've already read their numbers if we did, yeah, I mean, that's not gonna fly.
If we didn't, then, but we wouldn't know that until we have read them, so...
I would like to say, you know, if you choose bid both a price for statutory publications and a separate price for non-statutory publications, that solves the issues as clear as the bill, judge, rule on that is what I was...
Well, that's how it comes, that's how they've been bringing it in anyway, so they'll just continue doing it like they always have, I would assume.
That's the problem.
No, no, with some new language, Jim, some saying we put non-statutory, statutory, but they're gonna, it's not gonna change how they're doing it, because they've been doing it that way anyway.
Right, it just gets a little more clarification from our end.
It isn't gonna complicate anything by putting those words back and...
I think we're setting ourselves up for potential issue if we don't clarify what it is we want to...
Let's clarify it, and it shouldn't, and they won't have any issue with it, because they've been doing it that way anyway, right? If we, if we put those words in, as I said.
And Jordan decides, or Mr. Gravels decides to bid it a different way than they have previously, this could be a problem.
You misunderstand what I just said, I said, "Change the words, put in what he just said," and it won't affect them now, because that's how they've been doing it anyway.
Okay.
So, it's okay, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay, that's fine, it's not an issue I wanna fight too much about.
No, we're just agreeing, we're all agreeing.
Well, you know what, if you guys want to, Chair would allow for reconsider this motion, if you want to change your wording, if not, we'll... If you want to change your wording. If not, we'll leave it and move on. Up to you guys.
She found the bids from last year.
Oh.
My heart tells me to reconsider it, so I know that we're doing it as appropriately as we possibly can.
I move we reconsider that last motion.
And moving second to reconsider the item of business concerning the, uh, bid request for, uh, publication of legal notices, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries? So we are back into reconsideration of the motion.
Do you have to resend that last?
No, no, we don't. We just reconsidered it, so. That would be my suggestion. That's all I can bring to the table, is we insert the words after the word "costs" to insert the word for statutory and non-statutory.
I move we insert the words "costs" after "cost," the words "non-statutory" and "statutory." Or reverse. Go ahead.
So your motion before didn't have to do with how the letter was written.
Right, the motion before was this, right here.
Can I read the...
Yes, you may.
So the motion was to notify both newspapers requesting bid proposals for the 2020 statutory and non-statutory notices.
So that's, that's good.
And the inherent intent was to notify them via this letter.
Right, so we just, now all we're doing is just modifying the actual language, which really doesn't change the motion that we made. We're gonna send the request for the non-statutory.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We really, we need a motion to send this letter.
Yeah, we need to...
As worded.
Yeah, we need to, what we're now, is a motion for the actual language we're using in the letter, not the motion that was passed.
I think notifying them is...
Right. So we're in the, we're in a period of reconsideration of the main motion, which was to notify the papers.
Right.
So we can leave that motion on the table and include with this letter
Yeah.
how whatever form this letter ends up looking like.
Correct, and we can fix the language.
So we don't have to go back and re-deal with our motion to reconsider, because
That's right.
we're still good.
Let's let it drop.
We haven't, we haven't nullified that motion, we're just talking about it again.
That's right.
So, um, I'll suggest that. Commissioner Prince, you have something different? A different approach to deal with that?
That would be, that would work. I just want clarity.
Right, this bid is to include the cost for, I'm gonna say both. Statutory, if I can spell.
Non-statutory.
And non-statutory.
And...
And I'm fine.
If I can spell.
Would've thought this would've got this complicated.
It's your fault, Jay.
Did you get my little note I sent you?
I answered you, but it's always weird when it's a text to my email. It's like this tiny, and I wrote, "You're welcome." And I sent it back, but I don't know if I can send it to you.
It was your fault.
It was just such a nice thing you did. I just want to tell you thank you.
Worth it.
Okay, so then that paragraph reads, "This bid is to include the costs for both statutory and non-statutory legal publication bids for countywide publications required under CRS 2470-1."
That sounds like it'll work for me.
Neither one of them really been read the letter, though.
I'm sorry, I killed this.
Yeah, oh, glad they reminded me to do it.
What date, what date does it need to be on the date?
Yeah, we're not...
Okay, move right along here, fellers. Did we pass it yet?
No.
We did, or we gotta redo it because we rescended it?
Or we reconsidered it.
Reconsidered it, so we're just confirming it.
So the inherent intent, in my opinion, was to make that notice with this letter. The motion doesn't say that, but
Right, that was...
you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
We're sending the notice for this statutory.
And I will, uh, write two of these letters and give those to Ms. Kara, and she can shoot those out. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote on the favor of notifying the two newspapers of the publication of bids. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries? Any other items, gentlemen, to come forth? Would you have?
Just the hand, yeah, just the hand, tower, tower.
The only public comment I had was, I am gonna get a hold of Conklin and get the date squared out on this meeting.
Any public comment?
Come on, Jack.
Hearing none, we'll, most chair will entertain the motion of adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second it. Moving second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries?